Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Dr. McGuinness?
Yep, Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Miller? And Ms. Curran?
Here.
All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members of the board, is there a motion to appoint Ashley as this evening's, I guess, Miss Evening's Donna Baker?
So much.
Thank you. A motion, a second? And whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry, forget that's me already.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yeah.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? Approval of the agenda, is there a motion? Thank you, Whitney, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
And the motion passes? Six, zero? Okay, bond update?
Uh, yes, give you a quick update, not a whole lot of differences from the last time because things are, have progressed pretty well. The athletic fields and tracks, Central, they've started laying turf there. They had to go back and do a little bit of soil stabilization last week, but they're starting to put some of the underlayment pad down there and everything, so you should start to see some of that very soon. Uh, they're finishing up some dirt work both at Benton and Lafayette, finishing up some drainage at Lafayette, and then before too long, you'll start to see some stuff being laid there as well. Hosea, final walkthrough today, just a few minor touch-ups. Uh, so we're about to officially take the keys over to that new addition, so it, uh, it looks really, really good if you get a chance to be down there. The road projects, uh, Carden Park will be finalized any day right now. Uh, there's a traffic light that we're waiting on to finish that, but the road itself is complete. Oak Grove, uh, work is beginning there, uh, so hopefully weather will hold and we can get moving on that as well. Sidewalks, Parkway is nearly finished, we're about ready to sign off on that project over there. Pickett, mobilization has begun there, so you may see some equipment starting to be around there, so work will be started soon there. Spring Garden, uh, they're starting to do some saw cutting and erosion control there, uh, so you'll start to see some work going on there pretty soon as well. Intercom Systems, uh, Jake's piece here. Uh, completed buildings are Parkway, Pickett, Oak Grove. Uh, buildings that they're finishing programming are Carden Park and Lake Contrary. Buildings that are installed, but they're awaiting the programming are Lafayette, Central, and Benton, and they're currently installing in Spring Garden, so that project's coming along and it's on track to be completed prior to school starting in the fall. Fine Arts, uh, they are near completion on all projects there. Uh, equipment is pretty much finished as far as any ordering there. I think we have some curtains to install at a couple of places, and that, that may be just about the final piece of that, those projects, so lots of projects there. Uh, HVAC upgrades, work is going on at all four sites right now, so Ruby Dew, Edison Field, and Mark Twain all have, uh, activity going on there. And then the Science and Technology upgrades, uh, we should have the final purchases, uh, should begin this month and will be complete from everything on that, so, uh, a lot of good stuff going on. Dr. Edgar and I, uh, spent some time walking out with Chris Roush last week, uh, so we should have a good story, uh, coming out. I think that will be nice to show a lot of people all the work that's been done, so there's been a lot of work done in the last, uh, twelve months, so. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are the majority of those things scheduled to be done before fall?
Um, I'm trying to look and make sure. All the, all the tracks and fields, yes. Hosea will be done any day. Oak Grove will not make it by fall, that was the bid that was approved last board meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna take a little longer. Uh, Spring Garden, uh, same, probably shortly after the beginning of school. Intercom Systems will be done before school. Fine Arts should be done within the next month or two, so it will be done before school. HVAC, the plan is to have those all done before school in the fall as well. Um, and Science and Technology upgrades will be finished this month.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Seacrest. Okay. Dr. Lau? There she is.
Okay, you should have a document by your stations. So I just, um, wanted to give all of you a brief update on our CSIP implementation review and our progress towards that. So I just put a little information, uh, at the very beginning, so you kind of get a feel for, uh, some of the timelines. So you may remember September ninth of last year, we received notification, um, that we had been selected for the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, the CSIP Implementation Review by DESI as part of the M six and DESI educa- uh, education requirements. So then on October fifteenth, uh, we came back and gave you, um, a formal presentation about our CSIP and, um, making sure that you were aware of where we were on that and update the CSIP for 2024. Then March of 2025, DESI, um, gave us our first formal presentation of information, and so they let us know all of the documents and all the requirements for this, this formal review. And then, uh, coming is July first, uh, DESI will hold their second informational meeting, providing updated guidance and addressing questions that districts may have as they begin their implementation review work. So again, this is, um, you may recall in 2022, under M six, we were one of the first districts chosen to submit their CSIP through this process, and so this is our review as to implementation and updated Continuous School Improvement Plan. So that just gives you a timeline of where we've been and where we're going. So just so that you know, now that we have those documents from, uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, there's basically, uh, five core requirements, uh, with a total possible score you can get on these five, um, categories of forty-two points. So the first is Continuous School Improvement. The second is CSIP Fidelity Implementation Rubric. The third is Priorities for Continuous Improvement. The fourth is CSIP Implementation, uh, Responses. And then the fifth is a Culture or a Climate and Culture Verification Report. So I just wanted to update you on all of those categories to let you know where we are on those things. So for, um, Continuous School Improvement, a draft of the district's Continuous Improvement Plan was submitted to the Regional Director as of, uh, June sixth, twenty twenty-five, and we received feedback, actually today, um, June ninth, um, which is being incorporated to strengthen our plans further. So just as a side note, I had sent this to our Regional Director on Friday, and she responded, "Hi Kendra, this is a great working document, it is easy to monitor and implement, the key is, can anyone pick up this document and follow the district's vision?" So we're off to a good start, we thought that was good feedback, I shared that today in our, in our Academic Services meeting. And then if you'll, if you'll flip your page over, um, CSIP Fidelity of Implementation Rubric. The initial review of the fidelity rubric has been completed, the district is now working collaboratively to fully develop this rubric with plans for building-level improvement plans as well. We really liked this document, and so, uh, together, Dr. Adams and I have been working on a rubric that can be used for buildings, um, and their improvement, uh, plans, so we can monitor more closely the fidelity to their actions versus their plans. And, and then we also have Priorities for Continuous Improvement, so that's another component. So all required document, documentation has been reviewed and compiled for DESI's consideration. Notably, on December sixteenth, the Board of Education received a detailed presentation on the 2024 Annual Performance Report and Grade Level Proficiencies. Further, on February tenth, twenty twenty-five, the SJSD Bounce Scorecard was presented as a key tool for monitoring our CSIP progress. And so basically what priorities continue for Continuous Improvement and Compass and for, from DESI's lens and, and for ours are how do we know that these documents and, um, what are the, what is the evidence that the plan is continually being implemented? So when we submit documents, we have to draw from Board of Education documents so that they are clear that those things are happening and those things are being presented, that's why I pointed out those two pieces. Um, so for as far as CSIP Implementation Responses, a draft of the district's responses was submitted to the Regional Director on April twentieth of twenty twenty-five, and on June fourth, the, uh, the district received confirmation that the documents met the DESI requirements. So those are a lot of responses that DESI is asking us to compile as to how, um, do we know that our CSIP is being implemented and, and how do we, how can we describe that to them in simple terms that they can, um, understand that we are doing those things? And, and then a Culture and Climate Verification Report. This report was sent to the Regional Director on January twentieth of twenty twenty-five and subsequently, uh, presented to the Superintendent's Cabinet in February of twenty twenty-five for review and discussion. So the next steps, um, all required documents for the CSIP Implementation Review are due to DESI on December twenty twenty-five. So I take a pause here to let you know that this document, this brief that I put together for you is simply a preview of what's to come, so that we are sending draft, um, drafts of what is required of us now, so that when we bring these, these documents to you for your review, that they're not in draft form anymore. So this is just a brief so that you, um, can better understand where we are in terms of our progress. And the district's current progress positions us well, um, to earn full points, that's the feedback we've gotten so far for each required requirement, and to complete the process ahead of schedule, so we're looking forward to that. And then, you know, as we look to the future, successfully meeting these requirements will provide a strong foundation for the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty CSIP, and again, that's the document that I submitted on Friday and got, uh, feedback, uh, for today, which is currently being developed, we've got a lot more work to do, um, but it is a framework, and so we're looking forward to, uh, really developing that document, and it will guide our continuous improvement, uh, efforts over the next five years. And so in summary, the, the district has demonstrated a proactive and systematic approach to CSIP implementation and processes. With clear mile- milestones achieved and ongoing collaboration, the district is on track to meet all DESI requirements, positioning itself for continued success in regards to the CSIP. So that was just a brief to let you know where we were on that, and that journey again started back in September of last year. And I'm happy to take any questions, but more to come because we'll be sharing these documents with you.
Um. It's a lot of information and a lot of work. Um, I do appreciate everything that you guys are doing. And you mentioned, um, we'll be able to look at everything at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and not draft form.
Well, ideally on June thirtieth, when we have our board retreat, I believe CSIP is a part of that, so it'd be great to get feedback from the board as far as the direction we're going to with, with those goals.
In September, in September, sorry.
I'm sorry, it's okay.
No, go ahead.
Are we able to look at the climate and the culture report?
Yes.
Like, or is that like at the end, or are we able to look at that like anytime soon?
So I, we have, we have been submitting that since, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, but we'll submit another one for this cycle, so yeah, it exists, and so that's something I can get to Dr. Edgar.
Thank you.
In September, um, of twenty-four, when we were selected, um, there's different connotations to the word selected.
Correct, yes, and, and, and random is their selection process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, so is it, but is it an honor to be selected, or is it?
No, not necessarily, um, it's just that, um, when, in twenty twenty-two, we were selected to be in Cycle One of this whole process out of the five hundred and some odd districts across the state, we could have not been, uh, we could have declined because Dr. Edgar was a new superintendent, but he told us, you know it, we're gonna go for it. So we, we started in Cycle One, that's now, that's why now we're being reviewed for our implementation in Cycle Two.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
It's not a good thing or a bad thing, though.
No, I didn't either, in front of the other, but I know. Sounds like it is a lot of work. And it'll be interesting to see as it comes out, um, how that work does guide our, our actions, you know what I mean? That, that would be a mystery to me at this point, but I'll look forward to learning that.
Yeah.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, Dr. Lau. Um, externship, is that you, Dr. Lanning?
Yes, it is, that's me. Uh, so this is the third year that we are bringing back the externship experience. I do believe they did this prior to COVID and then it kind of paused. So this is in partnership with actually Christie Arthur at the Workforce Alliance, and it's an opportunity for our teachers and our counselors to have an experience in local business organizations. So we have six of those this year that's listed on the actual grant that is Altech, BI, Herzog, Hilliard, Midland Steel, and Mosaic. And so what they do is they go to those places, uh, for four different days, they'll have a rotation and go to four different businesses, and learn about what some of those career paths are, just to educate them to be able to provide more knowledge to our students. And so this is a grant that is offered through the state, and we've had twenty people sign up for the externship experience in July. Five of them requested to be paid outside of Career Ladder, and so we are seeking those funds through the state with the assistance of Northwest RPDC. So this is the same route that we took last year, and then hopefully if we are awarded, they will pay up to twenty individuals if they are choosing not to use Career Ladder. So everyone is compensated, and we've let them choose if they want to tap into Career Ladder or if they'd rather be paid outright, the four hundred and six, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, I'm sorry, weekly rate. See, you got a question?
I do.
Oh.
So I'm trying to get my arms around this idea that we choose the method by which we get paid, so like, i- is this, are these folks that aren't eligible for Career Ladder, but they'd like to go, so they need a grant? Is that, is that?
Some of them are, some of them choose to do both, so they want to make the four hundred and sixty-four dollars, and, and then they also participate in Career Ladder.
So why wouldn't everyone want to do that?
Because I have a lot of other stuff.
They want to do the hours.
Some people do not choose to do Career Ladder, we have four hundred and nine that did it this year, um, but some people just simply don't want to do the hours, there's a fifty percent student contact hours rule, and so.
Okay, so it's more than just this one event for, uh, externship, Career Ladders, you sign up for a bunch more than just that?
You do, yes, that's that, um, I reported on last month, so that there's three different stages, they have fifty hours, seventy-five hours, or a hundred hours throughout the whole year. And so some people like to get their hours, get a head start, and tap into this as an opportunity, and it also benefits their kids. There's quite a few counselors who do that, um, to see, make those business contacts, and then also Hilliard staff, but then other folks, um, just would rather get paid outright. They're not, either they're not doing Career Ladder, or they know they're gonna go way over the one hundred hours, so they would like that compensation in Career Ladder hours. Does that make sense?
I'm gonna say yes.
But you don't have to.
Yeah.
So per Board Policy DD, I am to present this, it's, um, still in the works, and I actually think we have a sixth person who is wanting to be paid, so I'm glad that we have that, up to twenty participants in the grant.
How do we select the externship hosts?
The hosts?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's through the Workforce Alliance with the Chamber.
So we partner with the Chamber and they identify the businesses that we send to?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just gonna go ahead and say I have a real problem with this partnership with Herzog. Um, I know we're not supposed to talk about Herzog, um, but I have a real problem with us working with a business that is actively funneling millions of dollars into defunding and dismantling public education. That seems very contradictory, um. I have, I just have a real problem with that. And obviously, if no one else does, then we can act like it's nothing and it's no big deal, um, but, uh, I think we go, it's like the worst kept secret in town, it's the worst kept secret in our school district, um, and I just have a real problem with it. But again, if I'm the only person that has a problem with it, then it'll move forward.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McGuinness? Thank you, Ms. Lanning?
Jessica here, we know this is always a problem for me. Okay, so before you, you have a new, um, job description for what is called a Nurse Supervisor for Special Services. And this came about through a conversation with Dr. Eg- Edgar when he met with the nurses at his monthly luncheons that he does. Um, there are concerns about, um, RNs, what you may or may not know is when we have LPNs on staff, they have to be supervised by an RN, and all of that documentation has to be checked over by them, they have to oversee their work, so on and so forth. So I was brought into the conversation because we were looking at potentially having to outsource some of our nurses, um, through supplemental, which is kind of my cup of tea with all the supplemental staff that I have to employ. So I started doing some thinking and brainstorming about how we could potentially, um, ease that load while also protecting some of our most vulnerable students. So we created this job description, Tammy, um, Smith-Hinchy and I did, based off of a model that we saw in a couple of other districts. And this nurse supervisor would oversee the LPN pairs within the district that provide services for special needs students. So currently, we employ three LPN pairs that are one-to-one, um, necessary per student's IEP or health needs. Um, for instance, students that have trach, um, feeding tubes, uh, very significant disabilities that require medical care. Um, next year, we will have seven LPN pairs on staff due to significant medical needs that are related to, uh, students on IEPs. So when doing some research and thinking, um, we could potentially, um, hire an, a nurse supervisor that would oversee these LPN pairs, that could help oversee all of their documentation, provide significant training, some of which we haven't really been able to provide like we need to, but then also we can bill for Medicaid, which we've been wanting to do with our LPNs, um, that oversee special services, but we just really haven't felt like we could because we didn't have the staff to maintain that. Um, so you'll notice in the description, um, we have been told by our Medicaid vendor that we could increase revenue at minimum to three hundred and sixty to five hundred thousand dollars. So we're, we could potentially make money off of this position while also keeping students safe and supporting our RNs. So with that being said, the RNs within the buildings would still be able to take care of their students, their diabetics, their clinics, without having to try to oversee this as well. And again, this is just a new job description that we felt, um, could be supported and paid for through special services with the Medicaid reimbursements, but then also we have a high needs fund that this could also be tagged to.
Why is it duly supervised, so it has two?
Yeah, so I obviously don't have a nursing background, um, and so I feel like although I would supervise a portion of it because it would be paid for out of my department, that Tammy would also need to supervise and know exactly what kind of training was needed for that, so that's why we said it was a dual supervision. Because then also we train our LPN pairs on how to perform in the classroom, like with the, um, pair needs as well as the nursing needs.
Is there another question, Wendy?
No, I mean, I just, I mean, if, if the coordinator, I just, I don't ever, I don't typically see two supervisors situations going well.
Yeah, so she wouldn't work directly with Tammy, she would be housed within buildings and just oversee those seven individuals. So I know other districts like Liberty has this model because of the significant needs and documentation that's required.
With the dual supervision?
Oh, you mean both of us supervising?
No, I'm not concerned about the position, I, I think the position is great, I think the way you're gonna fund it is great. I don't have any problem with that, I just have it as like the.
So we just felt like both needed to be involved, I guess I should say, so Tammy would really evaluate the person.
Okay.
I just feel like if I am paying for it out of my department and there are expectations on the pair side and the Medicaid side, which I oversee, that we kind of both have a role in that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you see that in other organizations like dotted line, right?
Yeah.
Just be clear, I would say on, on who's, um, you know, who's the acting supervisor for things like performance appraisals?
Yes.
And, uh, you know, um, problems that might arise, how that's handled, so.
Absolutely, we would definitely outline that. Like I said, I would not do any of the supervisor and, and checking on the nursing portion, it would really be the training of the Medicaid, making sure that was, um, done appropriately, and then the pair supervision portion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Kiella?
Hello, I wanted to, um, discuss with you or bring to your attention that we are hoping to apply again for the MOQPK grant. Um, it is open, the application window is open currently, and we do plan, um, to, with your approval at the next board meeting, to go ahead and apply for that again. So this last year, we had sixty-five students that we received funding for, um, which was a great addition to our program. So this last year, we had sixty-five students that we received funding for, um, which was a great addition to our program. The beauty of the MOQPK program is that you, you have to still meet criteria, but it doesn't have, they don't, all the students do not have to qualify for free and reduced lunch, where through our ADA funding for our preschool classrooms, you do. So this allows, um, additional students to be able to participate in our preschool program that do not qualify for early childhood special ed, or through title funds or ADA. It just gives us an additional funding stream. So the actual application is due, I believe, on the twenty-seventh. Yes, um, so June twenty-seventh, so we'll have a board meeting prior to that, um, and hopefully we'll have an approval to move forward. And then we would know on July ninth if we get awarded the grants. Guys have any questions for me?
How many classrooms?
Um, so this past year, we ended up with four classrooms. We had, we started with three, and then they had, uh, additional funds, so they allowed us to open up one more classroom. Um, and so we ended up with a fourth.
So will this be for four this time?
So what we're looking into, and this is why I don't have exact numbers right now, um, with this data is a blended model of funding to where we can have in the same classroom MOQPK-funded students, ADA, ECSC, title. Instead of having separate classrooms, the hope would be that we could have blended classrooms. So we don't have the final approval on that. So if we were to stick with separate classrooms, I would anticipate it's still being four, two at each building. However, if it goes by student count, which is what I'm hoping for, so we can have a more diverse population in our classrooms, then, um, you know, it'll be by student number.
Who grants that approval?
Um, the approval comes through DESI.
DESI.
So, yep, it's a, one that is through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Office of Childhood puts this out. And so not only can school districts apply, but also childcare facilities. So you'll see the other individuals also apply for this grant. Priority is given to, um, LEAs who have received the, the grant prior, which we will have that benefit. And then also, if we, um, we claim ADA funds, so average daily attendance funds for preschool.
And the amount's already guaranteed?
Yeah, so that's the beauty, also, of that. It is a guaranteed amount, where our ADA, um, it depends on attendance. And so with our littles, attendance isn't always as strong, and I understand that. Kids get sick, and, um, they don't always come, so we do get funded on, um, on a set rate per student.
I already knew that, I just wanted everybody else.
Oh, okay. Um, I will go ahead and say that with this, um, some of the qualif, or some of the things we have to do is we have to be a part of a quality assurance program, um, which it was really, it was good for us last year, and we plan on next year moving forward with the whole, both early learning centers doing that, um, regardless. And then we have to use a curricu, same, same rules as for our other programs, same curriculum, and all that. So. Any other questions?
I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, employee handbook.
Mr. Crowe?
Thank you for having me at the table today. I'm sitting in for Dr. Kraus, who is unable to make it. Um, attached, you'll find the changes to the employee handbook for twenty-five, twenty-six. The changes are in red. Once you look at this, and if you have any questions, we'll go back and make some, um, adjustments and present that next week, excuse me, in, uh, two weeks. Some of the main changes in the handbook, um, are noted in the legend. I'll just kinda go over those briefly. Um, there's a welcome statement changing from Dr. Edgar to Dr. McGinnis. Made some changes to the mission, goals, and values from page seven. Um, page fifteen to twenty, um, the entirety of section three-one was revised, but there are no significant changes in the content. Twenty-three and twenty-four, Senate Bill seven-twenty-seven, um, some changes because of that, that is a result of the academic calendar and AMI days. Page forty-six, um, identifies our new evaluation system, going from, um, talent ed to frontline. And then pages fifty-two and fifty-three about crayons to computers. I know there were some questions about that, and we are, um, we're gonna meet and, and discuss that soon. Um, and then page seventy identifies the date and method for signing off on the employee handbook.
Can you go into greater detail on the crayons to computers?
I'll let Dr. Edgar.
Okay, um, so what, what had happened there is, uh, I think we probably just need some better oversight or supervisory type, um, clarification. So I'll just be honest with you, I did not see this, and when I saw it, um, I don't feel that it's necessary to punish sixteen hundred employees for one person's mistake. Um, and so we, we did have an employee, a good employee, um, who, uh, we ran into some issues with in regards to selling the product. And, um, so, anyway, um, that, I guess that's why that's in there, but, um, we'll, we'll be taking it out.
So what part are you gonna take out?
Probably all of it.
Like no reference to crayons to computers?
Right, right.
'Cause it was never?
It was never referenced before, right?
And we don't operate, we don't operate, do we operate crayons to computers?
We operate, we oversee it. Um, Christina, um, I believe is her name, uh, what's her last name?
Holmes.
Christina Holmes, I'm sorry. Uh, she, she is the operations manager for that.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And we will reach out to her, though, and have a conversation. I don't know if anyone had a conversation with her yet, but we will, you know, sit down and visit with her too, because she is the one that deals with it on an everyday basis. You don't wanna put her in that position, in my opinion.
Did we follow up with the person that, um, was not appropriately using the?
Ma, yes, unfortunately, uh, like I said, she was, uh, she was a very good teacher for us at, uh, Rubidoo, but, uh, was a, um, international teacher, and, um.
HR, HR.
Yeah, right.
There wasn't, like, a convo with Christina prior to putting this in the handbook?
Nope.
Okay, but we're gonna fix it and remove it, so. There goes all my questions. Are there any more about the handbook?
Hey, Mark, help me understand, uh, three-one was completely revised, but no significant changes in content. What's going on there?
I would love to answer that question, but, um, I cannot, 'cause I was not a part of these changes.
Okay, Roger that.
So I, I, I apologize.
Yeah, I just.
I don't know if anybody else has any, any background on that.
You know what I mean, there's, there's no changes, but it's completely revised, so I'm just trying to.
We can.
I can help with AMI, it cannot help without me.
Yeah.
I will do some investigating, and I will get back with you.
Thank you.
'Cause it's like all in red. But. Are we approving this next meeting, or are we just looking at this, or?
Next meeting.
Yeah, well, and I think it's, handbook's just usually informational anyway. It's not a board approved, it's just an informational.
Okay. I think, so I couldn't remember, but I mean, I would like, you know, to look, get this answered prior to it being official. Like, 'cause it's tiring.
Well, we've, and we've had this conversation before. My only issue with, with the handbook not being something that we approved is that it's related to, to personnel action. It's related, I can't remember exactly, we talked about an issue that had to do with pay. I cannot remember what it was, it was.
I, I do now. You literally, yeah, it was in there, it was like the, uh, thirty dollars an hour.
Oh, it was the, it was the, um.
Have we discussed pay days?
It was, yes.
Yep, it was the days.
It was the pay days for, it's the paid days for the hourly staff. So, I, I would make the point that if it, if, if we're making decisions on pay and personnel decisions, either it shouldn't be in the handbook, or it should be something that's approved by us and put into the handbook. And I, and I get the rest of it is not, you know, uh, we don't know what's in that one. But, you know, some of this, like with twenty-three, twenty-four, like that's not in there. But, but if it's something that's gonna affect compensation and personnel decisions, I think, again, either we approve the handbook, or we approve the policy that is referenced in the handbook.
I don't disagree. I don't see why you wouldn't approve the handbook. And I would say that the reason behind it is because if you make changes throughout the year, then you don't have to take it back to the board each time. But I don't see an issue with approving the employee handbook. So I think we can put it on there as a.
What do you guys think?
That'd be good. Kinda thought of the word. Is it normal that we make changes during a year?
I'm just guessing is, that that's the reason why, um, but I, I, I really don't know that time. But I don't see a, I don't see anything negative to why you wouldn't do it. We just never have.
What do you think, Dr. McGinnis?
I don't see anything changing in the employee handbook, parent-student handbook, like, um, the cell phone bill. If that's going to pass, then obviously, we would change the parent-student handbook, that language. So that would make a difference. The only thing I can think of that I'm looking at right now is the AMI days. So if for some reason, something happened, and we had to change the AMI days. Right now, we have makeup days, so if we go over our six days of six hours, we have makeup days. If for some reason, those were to change, then we would have to bring that back to the board.
I guess the only thing I'd say is that it's very similar to APs in your policy.
I disagree with that, too.
Procedures. Yeah.
That's my opinion. My opinion would mean nothing in a few weeks.
And honestly, we have talked about changing scenario A, scenario B. It's my personal opinion, our staff still get hung up on what's scenario B, does that mean I go to work today? I would rather us just use clear language of who goes to work. I think that's confusing for staff. We have a scenario C, a scenario D, I don't know if you guys know that, so.
And with that example, I mean, if we change the AMI days, the board's gonna be involved in that conversation anyway. It's not like you're not gonna.
And I think, I think when you, when you approve that in, when you approve that in a board meeting, for it to go get updated in the handbook, I don't think you would need to bring the handbook back. Like, you're updating this, and you're, and it's board approved, so you're updating what we've already approved.
Sure, I'm gonna make that change, you said?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, where did my agenda go? Okay. Job description updates.
Okay, that's me as well. Um, we've attached those as well. I know there were some questions. So after some collaboration today with district leadership, um, we are suggesting that we do not approve the job descriptions at the June board meeting, so we can go back and have some further discussion, and hopefully bring those back to you in July. We found a few inconsistencies in some of the documents. For example, um, for middle school assistant principal, there is no mention of athletic duties of being an AD. So we wanna make sure that things like that get added to the job description. Um, that's just one inaccuracy that we, that we saw today, based on some of the questions and, and some, some discussion. So we would like to take that back and review them again with our teams, and make sure they are as accurate as possible.
In advance of that, I had a couple, I guess now, suggestions. So, some of, some of the job descriptions had tweaks and, and, you know, like just revisions to wording, things like that. Some of them had pretty significant changes, and some of them had reduced requirements. In the agenda, though, it said that there were no financial fair, uh, I don't know, changes. But when we're changing a job description that much, and we're changing the requirements, I would think that we would want to look at the salary, making sure that's commensurate with the responsibilities. Also, if you're reducing the requirements, so if I'm a Spanish teacher, is the one that, that stood out to me. If I'm a Spanish teacher, and I was hired under this set of requirements, and then we're changing those or reducing those requirements, and I understand the point of doing that, I, I get the situation of public education staffing. But if we're doing that, if I'm a current staff person, I might feel somewhat resentful by the fact that I was hired on a salary schedule with this, and then someone else is being hired at a, you know, not at the same requirements, getting paid the same. So I guess that, that goes back to my salary question, or suggestion.
So I asked Dr. Kraus about that, um, a couple of weeks ago, and he had said that, 'cause I asked him, I said, these ones are getting changed and a lot put on. He said that, um, it's not that they're added more duties, but they're just being more detailed of what they actually do through the day. Is that correct?
Yeah, 'cause I, I had spoken with Heather Adams, uh, who's gonna be my right-hand person. Um, and there were some questions about the, um, specialist or generalist?
Generalist.
Generalist. But there were a lot of additions to that, and, um, it's really, it's not really what they're doing day to day. Um, the entire team is doing that, it's something that they do occasionally, and they just added that to the job description. So it wouldn't be something additional that they are doing from day one, it's something that just wasn't in there. Does that help?
I know another one that I was looking at, um, was the, um, inch directional coach. Um, there were like lots of, like, a majority of it was marked off. Well. And then it's missing the qualifications. It's not placed on like a pay schedule at all. Just those little things, you know, but I mean, if you guys are gonna look at it more in depth. Um, well, and then the business partner coordinator positions, like, it's like a completely other job, okay? But the title's the same.
I can speak to that one. So, we have someone in that spot right now, and I would say what that person has been doing is going to schools, going to businesses, creating a partnership, but then there hasn't been a whole lot of follow-through. So for example, when I was at Lafayette as the principal, we added Buffalo Wild Wings as a business partner. They gave wings, add a pep assembly, and then we didn't have a whole lot more interaction. Our needs have changed, and headed down the path of real-world learning. Um, we've moved Dr. Davis over to Academic Services to help with expanding the pilot that we've done at Benton High School from UVA Learning. Um, we wanna expand that to all three high schools. So, we are taking advantage of an opportunity to use that person in a different way. Um, side note, we also have the School District Foundation, who also does some business partners work. Um, so the position that we have now, we are hoping can be that connector between schools and business community, and to provide kids with more opportunities for job shadowing, um, real-world learning, informal apprenticeships, all of those te, those pieces. So that is a complete change on that role. He's, he's aware of that, and Dr. Davis is aware of that, Academic Service is aware. So that kind of evolved based on our, our changing needs.
So how, how will these, I think, the thing that would help me in, if we're coming back in July, um, would be any changes, potential, necessary changes to the salary schedule or positions and their placement on the salary schedule, but also an org chart? Um, 'cause I know some of these positions changed who they're reporting to, um, so that we can see who's reporting to who, who's in what department. Um, but then also, and this doesn't need to be anything complicated, but some sort of an implementation plan. Um, you know, I know in situations like this, um, staff can say, well, I've never seen my job description. Or I, you know, I saw my job description when I got hired twenty years ago, but it's been changed, I haven't seen it. Um, so, and I know that's a lot of people and a lot of job descriptions, but if we have some sort of plan of, how are we gonna let people know, this is your job description, this is what you're supposed to be meeting?
Yeah, like. 'Cause we're looking at these, well, now then, everybody that's already in the role, like, it's new job duties then, right?
Right. Um, and I'll just tell you, from my experience, a lot of us were, we recruited those people who were in the roles to be part of the rewrite of the job description. So I took librarians, library facilitators, and I had those librarian gals that I've worked with for a year now, um, take a look at that and add some pieces. So they, some of them were a part of that.
I, I will tell you, any, any job description that fell in any of my departments, that's who I had to take a look at. The people who are actually doing the jobs to make sure the description matched what they're doing. So, while we're at that, since I'm on the thank you tour at meetings anyway, thanks to the people in my department who spent the time looking at those and doing that, 'cause I didn't look at very many of them. They're the ones who looked at them. Uh, the ones I directly supervised, I looked at those along with the people in those positions. But, for example, you know, a, a, a building tech, I don't know what a building tech does. But for example, you know, a, a building tech, I don't know what a building tech does on a day-to-day basis, but Jake Kelly probably has a pretty good idea. Somebody in food service, I don't know specifically what they do on a day-to-day, but Becky does. And so those people are the ones who really looked at those along with the people in the roles. On my side of things, and I think that's probably what happened in a lot of the other department areas too.
And that's, I mean, that was a great way to do it, but I think then making sure, it was not your idea. It was a good way to do it, but I think then making sure that that maintenance tech knows.
True.
And, and I, obviously, if there's some that don't have material changes, if it's just, you know, a word here and there, then it's not as necessary. But the big ones, obviously.
Hey Mark, one other thing that I noticed when we, that first night when I was added to the board and voted erroneously on some of the new positions, they, um, the requirements were completely clear, whether required or preferred. And that many of these have under qualifications required or preferred. But some of them don't use that, either of those languages. They, so I'm just saying, as you look through that, it might be good to take a look at the structure and see if, could, could we get that requirement on all of them? I, I could give a couple of examples, but I think it'd be easier for you guys to look through those and see i- if there's a way to have those, so that it's clear of what's required.
Okay.
Okay, guys, any additional comments? Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
You.
Okay, Dr. Seggers.
Uh, yes, just, uh, you've got, um, a little bit of an updated budget document, uh, attached for this meeting. Not a big change, uh, from what we looked at last month. So I think this is probably pretty close to where we're gonna land. We did, uh, decrease a few expenditures a little bit. Uh, and our, our, uh, spend down of reserves is slightly less, uh, from what the one I brought to you in May is. Sort of unbalance is slightly better. I will say that the, the reserve spend that we're talking about is point two eight percent of the entire budget. So we're pretty close to a zero budget. And again, we'll remind you that from a revenue standpoint, we were very, very conservative. We're very, very conservative with the numbers from DESI. We went below, uh, what DESI's recommendations were on several of those things. And again, that is so that the worst budget you see is gonna be the one we give you in June. Hopefully that will improve and there won't be any withholdings or anything like that throughout the year. And then we were also very conservative with the assessed valuation. Our five-year average, I believe, is somewhere around two point four. And we, we went with, uh, I can't remember, Katie's not here, I can't remember, we talked about one point eight. I think we went with one point eight.
You told me one point.
Yeah, one point eight. So, uh, again, we tried to be very conservative on the revenue side. So my anticipation is that probably better than what I'm giving you right now, but I wanted to give the most conservative budget we could. So what we bring to you in two weeks is gonna be very, very similar to this, if not exactly the same.
Dr. Seggers, help, help me feel good about the, uh, projected, at least in this budget, uh, nine million dollar spend uh, over what we're planning on taking in. Um, I think you just gave me all the reasons.
Yeah, and I would encourage you to look at the operating. That really is, I, I, I'll be honest, when you look at that grand total, that always is a little confusing, I'll be honest with you, for me.
Yeah.
Uh, but that takes into account capital funds where money is already committed. Some of your bond spending is committed there, things like that. The money that's already committed in there, that we're not gonna take money in this year, 'cause we've already taken that money in.
Okay, okay, so, 'cause it's just a year.
Yeah, so when it crosses over into two budgets like that, it's, um.
Yeah.
It, it's a little bit confusing and, and like Dr. Segers said, what you need to do is just look at the operating in itself and that's really the, the number that you wanna concentrate on. The grand total, I don't know, everybody's always done it, I, but I asked fifteen years ago, why do we put the grand total on there? Because all it does is create questions. But it creates questions because you're crossing over into two different budgets.
The operating's gonna really show you what our actual fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Revenue and expenditures will be.
So what twenty-five, twenty-six reflects is gonna be the operational expenses.
Could we move that to, could we move, could we move that? I mean, 'cause the grand total is not the grand total, so.
I think it's a statutory requirement or something.
I think that's how we'd have to show up because of the.
But we can't show the revenue from those two, from.
Well, there is no revenue this year.
Well, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, but it's.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, 'cause we sold the bonds in a different fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay. So what, what makes more sense is we are currently thinking we're gonna spend one hundred and fifty-two five and, and take in one hundred and fifty-two one. However, we're not terribly concerned about that four hundred thousand dollar shortfall because of all the reasons you just mentioned.
Right, I, I, I think our revenue will probably be better than that.
Yeah.
I would really anticipate that your first, um, budget amendment, you know, I would anticipate in October that you'll see a surplus.
If, if you remember last year, our original budget, uh, we anticipated a three point two million spend down and we're, we're under a million.
And that's also crazy, the timing for budgeting in public education is not right either, because they tell you you have to put a preliminary budget together in June.
Yeah.
And you don't have your first payroll till September.
Yeah, yeah.
And what's your big, biggest expense? It's payroll. So, um.
So it's like they do that on purpose.
And, and you don't know for sure what your revenue's gonna be, uh, until they pass a budget in May, so.
Yeah, well, and you know, that, that, that four hundred and thirty thousand is a way smaller percentage of what we're talking about here compared to nine million earlier.
Yeah.
Right, so probably a percent, something like that, so, okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? The next one's yours too, so.
All right, uh, this one's not as good a news, uh, but, um, I, just as a reminder, last year, our stop-loss insurance was an increase of twelve point five percent. We had two other proposals last year that were fifty-three percent, fifty-seven percent increases. So the twelve point five looked really good at that time. This year, locked and put it out to market, um, we had three, uh, firm proposals. There were six other business, or, excuse me, uh, six others that they declined to quote. There were two others that were uncompetitive at fifty and fifty-one percent. Part of the issue that we're running into, what we have right now, it, it's, it's an ironic issue. One, one piece we have is we have several, um, claimants that are hitting our stop-loss number. Our stop-loss insurance is at two hundred thousand and that's when our insurance kicks in, anytime we have anyone with claims over two hundred thousand. We have several employees, uh, that are hitting that for a variety of reasons. Employees or their dependents, should say. Even to the point that one of the three that bid actually, uh, wanted to put what's called a laser on one individual and make their deductible three hundred and ninety-five thousand as opposed to two hundred thousand. So the, the other piece, so that's one of the pieces we're looking at. The second piece that's creating an issue for us is that we have performed so well that they anticipate we will come closer to market. So in a sense, we're almost being penalized because we have, uh, had, had a low claim amount. You know, I take that for what it's worth, but they anticipate that we will come closer to what the average is, so to speak, or the median is. So the three companies that have responsive proposals, Blue Cross, Blue Shield with a thirty-three percent increase, Symmetra with a thirty-three percent increase, and Optum with a twenty-three percent increase, but they're the ones that want the three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar laser on that individual, which would already, that would essentially be a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Well, is it you?
It is not me. Yeah, it's not me, sorry. And I'm still gonna stay on the insurance when I retire, so you're not getting rid of that, you're getting rid of me a little bit.
Can you just take better care of yourself?
Uh, yeah, well, that's true.
Water.
So, um, so the recommendation we anticipate that we're gonna bring to you is Blue Cross, Blue Shield. That is gonna be about a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar annual increase. So, uh, again, the healthcare trust is in good shape, we can absorb that right now. With that, we did go say, well, let's take a look, is, is two hundred thousand dollars the right deductible amount? And we ran it with two twenty-five and ran it with two fifty.
Can you start over, what, what, what'd you say? Start over.
So.
You can raise your stop.
There were just so many numbers in our.
Yeah, you can raise the deductible amount from two hundred thousand. So we, we locked and looked at it with two twenty-five and two fifty instead of two hundred. When they ran what they call the Monte Carlo in this, well, I've learned a lot of insurance terms in the last couple of years. The two hundred thousand dollar deductible won sixty-one percent of the time. So it still is the one that makes the most sense from a liability standpoint. And I think that's the big thing to understand with the stop-loss insurance. It really is, it's our safety net, is what it is. It's not, uh, it's separate from our health insurance for everybody, but it's a safety net with us being self-insured that gives us that assurance that if we have some large claimants, we're gonna have, the most we're gonna be out is two hundred thousand on those individuals. So, uh, so the recommendation we'll bring to you is gonna be, uh, to go with Blue Cross, Blue Shield and stay with the two hundred thousand dollar deductible. We're still working on trying to negotiate a little bit there, uh, but anticipate that it's gonna be somewhere in that thirty-three percent range. The Optum with the twenty-three percent range with that laser, uh, did make it a forty-two percent potential liability increase compared to the thirty-three percent. So that's why twenty-three percent may sound better right off the bat, but, um, from a statistical standpoint, it, it didn't make as much sense.
When you bring this back next month, can you bring back, like, projections for the, for the healthcare trust? So I assume you're not gonna put that in like an update.
A- as in, when you say projections?
Well, like, if we're talking about cover, so we're gonna cover the three thirty from the healthcare trust.
Right.
And that's a good thing for you to be, for the school district to be self-insured, because if you were fully insured at this time, this would be a big hit.
Yeah.
We have a five million dollar balance, so your balance would, your balance would be four million, six hundred. So that's what you want, is it?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, yeah.
When I, when I bring you that monthly amount of what's in healthcare trust, anybody who's kinda been like, well, we have a lot sitting there, that's why we have a lot sitting there, anticipation of some of our, our expenses coming closer to market. 'Cause we have been, our, our claims have been really good. Like I say, it's ironic that in a sense, we're being punished from a marketing standpoint because they expect us to come closer to average.
Any additional questions?
I will say one thing, I, I, I did, so last year when we had the twelve and a half percent, the other two were fifty-three and fifty-seven. Even with this increase, our two-year increase over two years is about forty-nine percent. So even our two-year increase is better than what number two and number three would have been last year.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Seggers. Okay, next. Is that you, Dr. Gelfer?
Yeah, I wanna talk about job descriptions again. So actually, let me give you a little background. Uh, this is for sports marketing video production manager. And we are, in August, we will come to the end of a three-year contractor ex, agreement with L T N Global. And so, um, it's our sports marketing. So initially, it was Niles Media, I think I have that right. And so we have an individual that works through L T N with our sports marketing program right now. And so we believe that, um, after speaking with our sports marketing staff members, that they are good to go on the piece that, 'cause we were thinking about dissolving it fully. Um, the piece that we have with that is, um, they did thirty, uh, E S, ESPN productions for the year. But the rest of that, our own, um, sports marketing teams have been broadcasting live through Facebook. Give you a little more background, when it was launched, um, they had a studio that was at the hub at H, at Hillure Tech Center. And as we've evolved, all of our schools now have what I call a studio, so they broadcast right out of their own home base. And so, um, we felt like this position, um, our staff still need more of the technician side, but we thought that we could hire somebody at a little lower rate than what we're paying now, as well as hopefully support our communications department. So primary would be sports marketing, their primary role, and then a secondary role would be within our communications department. Ask me any questions.
So we pay this company.
We do.
And then, but, so the cost savings gonna come in that we're gonna be able to employ someone, someone cheaper than that agreement.
I, I would say, yes, we would be able to.
Can we see those numbers before we approve it or when we approve it?
Well, I was about to ask.
Estimation.
About the numbers now, like, how much are we paying now?
We pay eighty-five thousand dollars.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Eighty-five thousand?
Oh, so it's gonna be a savings. Well, I mean, unless the person is employed at like eighty thousand, like.
Sure.
Where would they fall on the schedule?
Well, we talked about that, there would be on the support salary schedule at a, at a nine-month, uh, contract. Actually, Dr. McGinnis and I just talked a little bit, that would be something, once communication comes in, it could be an extended contract to ten months. I don't, that would be up to you guys to make that decision.
So we're gonna be helping the communication department too as well, are you adding that to this? To this as well?
That would, that would be an additional role than what they currently do now. Right now, they just support all of our three high schools.
There is a line in there about the communications department, though.
Yeah, and I was thinking, it's in the purpose statement, and I was, after having the other discussion, we can definitely add that to the essential job functions as well, if that would highlight it more, I guess.
The only big difference would be not having those ESPN three games, which we did get a usage report on that. I don't believe there's many people watching our kids on ESPN three.
Most of it is through Facebook Live, um, and they, and you can, you have that option and in some cases, some have Huddle now as well. So you have a couple of platforms that one can watch, uh, games if they would choose.
Um, are there any additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Gelfer.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Dr. Egger.
Okay, um, in the foundation bylaws, it states that, uh, a board of education member, um, needs to be appointed to the St. Joe Public School Foundation. And your appointment was, uh, Rick Garing. And so, uh, the board of education at the next meeting will need to nominate somebody and approve that person to be part of the foundation. And, uh, I would entertain any questions you might have in regards to that.
Can we get an overview about the foundation?
So, um, I've been, obviously been part of the foundation since my, uh, since I was hired as superintendent of schools. I go, they have monthly meetings and, um, they have several activities, uh, throughout the year that is funded by, uh, the foundation in itself. I have had conversations with Julie Cobb over the last eight weeks in regards to, uh, bigger and better, uh, from the foundation. And, uh, reached out to some of my colleagues, um, in the suburban Kansas City area to kinda find out, uh, what they do, uh, for their foundations and, you know, and it's all over the place. You know, you talk to Smithville, I mean, a lot of it goes toward their activities, facilities and those types of things. There were a couple of good, um, things going on out there right now in regards to mental health, where their foundation is really assisting with some of the mental health needs that school districts need. And so, um, I provided her with that information, but as far as the foundation in itself, it's standalone. It's not part of the St. Joe Public School District, and so we do not run it. There is a governing board where, um, I do sit, there's one, uh, board of education member and then also two teachers.
So how is, so the position is not, so we don't govern it, we appoint, the superintendent holds a seat, we appoint a board member to a seat and then, but there, and so we're hands-off with, other than that form. But then they're in noise and then we have a financial agreement with them? Like, how does, how does the finances, how do the finances work?
So, um, they send us a monthly check for hers, for the salary of that person. So the foundation.
So we pay.
We pay the employee and, um, they, they reimburse us.
They reimburse us.
For salary and fringe.
Yep.
And then space, Wi-Fi, supplies, how does that work? And then space, wifi, supplies, how does that work?
Uh, all of those are funded by the foundation.
And why don't they just employ their own person?
Well, they do, they just needed a space, and so I disagree, I, I agree.
No, I mean, why are, why are we, why are we, um, facilitating the payroll?
Benefits, benefits.
So we pay the benefits?
We provide the benefits, yeah.
So we, so we do have a financial?
Yes.
That seems.
No, no, they can get the benefits by, from being in the San Joe School District. They, they reimburse us for the benefits as well.
But my issue with that is that then, if there's, I mean, there's some financial risk to us there. If that person is taking those benefits, and then we just got done talking about stop loss and things like that, if you have a, a, a very expensive event, then that's gonna affect our rates potentially.
And I'll be honest with you, there was a lot of discussion that was vetted by the, uh, by Ed Council whenever we went through this, because I had the same types of questions in the very beginning. But, I don't know, yes, to answer your question, yes, you would have some risk to that.
I'm looking at the bylaws, um, uh, and, okay, so do people, um, can like, people in the community just kinda contact at the board in order to give like a nomination to like appoint people to the board? Cause I'm looking and it says, a member of our board and admin, um, teacher representatives. And then it says, additionals are chosen from the general public.
That's true, yes. And there's probably, I think there's probably seventeen members. We, we don't have anything.
Is there an application process, is it listed online? Is anyone?
The school district.
I mean, I just don't know anything about the foundation, so.
And we have nothing to do with that.
So I, as far, so we do the benefits, are they also eligible for retirement?
Yeah, yeah, they have to be, yeah, they have to be.
So that doesn't seem.
But we're reimbursed for that as well.
Right, but, uh, that just doesn't seem clean to me. I mean, I, I think I could get along with the, and with the, you know, officing out of noise, like, okay, you have like close access, you're gonna be reimbursed for space, those types of things. But the insurance seems, especially if we only have two seats. It seems like they're, that's a little messy. But if I'm the only one concerned.
No, and, and what I, what I could do, if you could get those, uh, the questions that you're having in writing, and I, I'll get them all answered for you. I apologize that I was kinda.
No, 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 you, I just wanted to, one, make sure that we filled that spot, and then two, um, I just didn't understand how the funding worked. And again, I just think it's, um, not very clean. And then either we shouldn't do that with the benefits, with the retirement and the benefits. We either shouldn't do that, or we should have more seats on the board.
If, if we have somebody listed on our salary schedule, we're, I think we have.
Required to have, yeah, and that's what.
Why is she listed, they're listed on our salary schedule?
We can't pay anybody who's not on the salary schedule.
So we have, are we, am I, are you getting one of them?
Yeah, no, I, I.
It just seems very messy, like, we only have two people on the board that governs what happens, but we're taking the majority of the risks. Yeah, and again, to me, there's, there's two options to clean that up. Either it's a foundation and they support us and we have two seats and that's fine. Or you take our benefits and the re- the public dollar retirement, um, which I, I get reimbursements and whatnot. It's a benefit, um, and we get more seats.
And I, I really need to probably have, go back and have that conversation with Rachel again. It was between, um, Dr. Van Zall and I. It actually happened on my time, the beginning conversation was on his time, uh, with Ben Bird. And, um, I remember those conversations that I had with Rachel, but I don't, I don't remember exactly. I, I'm pretty sure it's clean and there's a reason why the contract is set up the way it is. But I understand what your questions are and I'll get them, get them answered.
I mean, I bet it is clean, you know, but it just kinda looks a little muddy. Well, or maybe we're just not, I guess.
Well, I don't think it's clean.
Educated on the facts.
I bet what's legal isn't always appropriate.
What do you guys think about this?
I'm just looking at what their purpose is, and their purpose is really, their sole purpose on here is to provide support for our district. I mean, that's their whole goal, right? They don't do anything with anybody else. So I think it's a lovely benefit for our district, and if it's only costing us the teacher retirement long-term, or the potential of somebody using more of our insurance, I still think we're money ahead.
Then, and, and I, I think that's fine, if we think it's a, a financial, um, gain, that's fine. But I think we should have more oversight in exchange for that. Two seats compared to the investment that we're making.
But we have more than two seats because there's teachers on there too. So the Board of Education representative, the administration representative, and then teachers.
Yeah, so I'm talking about this, the Board of Education, like, we're the ones approving the insurance, we're approving the salary schedule, we're approving stop loss insurance. We're, we're, we have the fiduciary responsibility. So I think we should have more oversight on what happens on the foundation in exchange.
Did you say Rick Garing had the seat last year?
He did.
And were you on this as well?
Yeah.
How often do they meet?
Uh, once a month, um, and it's usually three-thirty in the afternoon on a Wednesday.
I'm sure part of it is, is it's.
And I'll just be honest with you, I haven't, I'm not gonna sit here and act like I have. I haven't been to a meeting in probably five or six months.
I gotta believe part of it is to help facilitate payroll for them, so they don't have to have a setup to regenerate payroll.
It was all recruitment tool for them, yeah.
I'll send it you.
Do we also get like, um, are we a, are we able to look at like copies of the agendas, meeting minutes, things like that too?
Yeah.
Well, they should be public, aren't they?
Yeah.
I don't think those, those don't have to be public.
I think they are public, I mean, I get.
We, they're not on the.
You're on the board, you're, you know.
They're not, that's what I'm saying, like, they're not sunshine law, they're not.
Okay.
Anything like that. Now, um, I've asked for them a couple of times, and, I mean, I get them, I don't think they're like secret, but they're not publicly dispersed.
Well, and I'll be honest with you, we didn't have any board representation until Rick just did them, what was it, six months ago? So maybe it's, yeah, maybe it's something where the board needs to have some sort of report from that person that is representing.
That's what I was thinking, and then you would know what's happening based on the person who goes.
They do good things, really good things. Are there any additional questions?
So, and this is, and I'll include this in my email. So Gabe, you're still on, on that board until the end of the month, and I know we'll appoint someone in a couple of weeks. But could you bring up, um, at the tribute to teachers, including volunteers and retirees back in the celebration? I don't believe that happened at the last one.
We, we, we could, and I'll be honest with you, we as a school district took the, the retirees out and made it a separate function.
Yeah, I don't think you've been so, but we've, we've done a separate retiree event before.
No, we.
We did at the Metropolitan.
Just twice.
Yeah, that's the second time, and we asked for that to be taken away from the tribute to teachers, uh, because we felt like the retirees were not getting the, uh, recognition, it's specific recognition.
You know?
Well, we, I mean, we could, yes, I mean, I don't think they would have a problem putting them back in there. But that wasn't a foundation issue, that was us asking them to, uh, pull that out.
So where are the volunteers?
They still are a tribute to teachers, right?
They didn't do it.
We still have volunteer, they didn't do it this year?
They didn't do it this year.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Just two cents.
Okay.
Gables, you were out that night.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Okay. Also you, long-range plan.
Oh, okay. All right, long-range plan, I sent you a document this afternoon, uh, late morning, and apologize not getting this out earlier, but, uh, we did not meet till this morning at eight o'clock, um, to, uh, set things firm. So if you see, uh, as we've talked the whole time, you know, we feel like administratively, we're a two-high school model. One of the questions that we had, or one of the, uh, things that kept getting brought up was, what, do we want three middle schools to feed those two high schools? Or do we want four middle schools? And, uh, so as of today, we had decided that, uh, we will go with the four-middle school model. And please understand that this stuff can be tweaked along the way, it's just, uh, we wanted to get a plan out there in front of you. And let me kind of advance it a little bit, on the twenty-third, you will have a timeline that will be specific to exactly what we're talking about today, plus, um, putting a new high school on the ballot sometime in the future. And so, um, I just wanted to get that out in front of you, so you would understand that. So if you look at the two-high school model, um, it does not change, uh, from what we had said in, uh, Plan B. Uh, you have Central High School, uh, which will be fed by Truman and Benton. And you have Lafayette High School, which will be fed by Rubidu and Bodie. Um, the closures or the repurposes, uh, you have Hyde Elementary, Pickett Elementary will both be closures, and Pershing Elementary would be repurposed to an early learning center. Uh, the population model, I'm not gonna read that, uh, to you verbatim, but, um, it did drive some numbers. I know last time I reported, we were looking at eleven fifty and seventeen fifty. You can see that Central has, uh, grown, um, a little bit from that number. We feel like, um, we do need to keep Lafayette as close to eleven hundred or eleven hundred and fifty as we can. Uh, there are a lot more kids, um, down below. So whenever you look at this, when I presented the information to you last time, I was looking at the senior class. You know, I was looking at the high, the current high school. Now, this was built as a feeder system, and some of those classes are a little bit larger that are down below, which is driving this number, to be a little bit larger than what we reported before, so I wanted to kind of explain that. So if you look at the elementary, um, or on the second page, it has the elementary totals. Uh, you have five twelve, four thirty-five at Coleman, four twenty-four at Edison, three sixty-six at Ellison, three eighty-seven at Field. Which Field, um, if we would went with Model A, Field would have been one that, uh, was gonna be repurposed, and we have to use it as an elementary school now. Hosea four seventy-eight, Lindberg five hundred, Oak Grove six twelve, Parkway four seventy-three, Scaith five thirteen, and Spring Garden five fifty-two. And I think that really the only one that I see a, a big problem, not a big problem, just a, I had a question about specifically this morning, was Scaith at five thirteen. And, um, I think we can, uh, move students around and make Spring Garden a little bit larger if we needed to. And then Bodie at three oh six, Rubidu at two sixty-five, Truman at three fifty-three, and Benton at, uh, six fifty-three. And Ms. Williams and I, uh, had a discussion before the meeting started, and she asked about Edison going to Bodie rather than Truman. And I don't see, you know, that's a, definitely a number that we can run. What you would have to do to take a look at that, you would subtract the sixty-four sixth graders from Edison, um, from Truman, and then add those to Bodie, so those numbers would grow at Bodie. We obviously have plenty of capacity to do that, because right now we have four hundred and eighty-five students approximately at Bodie.
The problem is this have changes which high schools they end up at though.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, so you're shifting some numbers that are a little bit.
You, you'd be shifting sixty-four kids, and that would be, that would be Lafayette, right? And we're a little bit low at La- Lafayette right now at eleven oh one.
Yeah, you'd be shifting two hundred and forty kids, like four grade levels.
But this is also without, this is also without any consideration for Hilliard? Like, do we need to factor that in at the high school level?
Yes, that's a good point, and, and actually, um, it's kinda twofold. It, it, um, Hilliard is obviously one, uh, conversation that we had. Uh, partnerships with Missouri Western is another, um, conversation that we had. So a lot of these kids will be pulled out of these buildings.
At the high school level or?
At the high school level. And so at the junior, senior level, and so that would free up a little bit of that space. And so those conversations did happen. So these, these are gonna be the max, you're never gonna have eleven hundred and one kids in Lafayette at one time, and you're never gonna have eighteen hundred and ninety-five.
Can you, so.
And you take our attendance rate. I mean, just take that into consideration in your.
So can you add, can you bring that back at the next meeting of, 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 can you bring those numbers for, potentially what they would look like? You see what I'm saying, like, if you.
So how many kids are pulled out right now at certain times of the day?
Yeah, to give a, you know, cause so those are gonna be the, the max, max, every kid comes every single day.
Yeah.
Amount, if you can look at roughly how many kids are not going to be there because of whatever.
Yeah.
Um, my other question is, so I would assume, based on how we've been doing this for the last, I don't know, feels like a decade. You have boundaries drawn up for this, you have to. Okay, so can we get those? Uh, and then everybody can.
On the twenty-third, we'll get the boundaries?
We can do, we can do that.
I mean.
They, they won't be.
Listen, I get you, I, I understand, I understand.
They're, they're the boundaries of the current boundaries right now, aren't they?
No, 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 so these are different boundaries of.
Okay, and then I have, as he's coming up, I have one more question, so, we'll have a couple more, but, um, uh, uh, boundaries. Oh, middle school, so this would put all the middle schools to six through eight, or seven and eight?
Still seven, eight.
No, not still so, still seven, eight from Plan A.
It's going to be seven, eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Both plans were seven, eight middle school models.
Yeah, so on the boundaries, these are drawn to drive numbers, like, how many kids we need in each building, right? So after this was approved and finalized, the next step is to go through and divide them up, so we keep neighborhoods together as we're dividing, right? So the, the fear is if I publish that model, it's not gonna look like what it will be after I refine them.
By like how much?
Uh, some could be quite a bit, cause like right now, um, the Ellison numbers just go into the middle of the city just to get the numbers right. But when we do it, I'll take chunks off of the side, like off of Oak and off of, uh, Scaith, in order to fill from that area.
So that goes to my, that goes to my next question is, to me, before I would vote on anything, I would wanna see what our demographics look like, more specifically our free and reduced lunch numbers. Um, and I know we talked about that a little bit to some degree, or we were going to, I don't remember, about how.
That's actually easy around, we, yeah, we can do that easy, yeah.
We'll do that like we did before when we did.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, we can provide that.
But wouldn't you have to have the finalized boundaries?
Well, that's what I mean, yeah, when we, once we finalize boundaries, we can provide that data with it.
Okay.
Right, so once we get, get it closer to a final thing.
Okay.
So, once we move everything, get it divided, so neighborhoods are sticking together and we're not traveling quite as far.
Right.
Try to travel as little as possible.
Okay.
Then we'll know we can pull that, those numbers for those kids and, and have all of that data as well.
Okay. And then my next question, last one, I think. Um, would the plan here then, because our initial plan included, um, moving Pershing to an early learning center, would that be a part of this plan as well?
Yes.
So I wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, and I wanna go back and clarify on that Edison thing?
Yeah.
Because that, I actually spoke wrong to that, so I wanna make sure that I clarify that. That's probably not a possibility, uh, Latony, and the reason is, that would shift over two hundred.
Two hundred and forty kids.
Yeah.
Two hundred and forty kids to.
I realized it after Jake said.
Yeah, I didn't see it either when we were first up. So it would really need to be what this says.
Which, cause originally we had Edison going that way, but then that put Lafayette at like thirteen fifty, close to fourteen hundred, and we're, we know that that's not.
I get your explanation now.
Yeah.
I appreciate you trying though, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, and if your only other options are Coleman, I mean, and I, I've heard the response of like Edison's so close, but your next closest is gonna be Coleman and Oak Grove, and that makes even less sense. but your next closest is going to be Coleman and Oak Grove and that makes even less sense.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just curious why the decision to close Pickett as opposed, and I'm just curious, Bessie Ellison because of the cost to get kids to Bessie Ellison considering.
So Pickett's max two eighty.
Okay.
So it's a small, small school. Yeah, that's the, really the only reason.
Because I know a lot of kids go to Pickett because of it being all on one level.
Yeah.
So do we foresee maybe some of those kids then going to Bessie Ellison that's all on one level-ish sort of, but not really?
Yeah, that, that's part of the next steps is getting with Karen on all of those kids and seeing what we need to do with them if we can get them in buildings closer to home and integrated or what we need to do with those kids, so. Yeah, this, this model's based purely on address.
Okay.
Yeah, just so we can get kids shifted and get the preliminary, hey, this is the direction we need to go. And then we can go back and refine and.
Because is there any other school in the district that's all on one level?
No.
Okay.
Well, Oak.
Lake, well, Lake.
Well, it's, it's, so, yeah.
Okay.
Will there be in the initial plan, or Plan A, I guess if that's what we're calling it, there was considerations of using repurposed buildings for a welcome center and a gifted center. Is, has that come up?
You know, we really haven't, we really haven't elaborated too much on those conversations, but obviously it's something that probably needs to be done.
I think, well, and I just think if, you know, Plan A had so many great things in it.
Yeah, obviously.
And it wasn't just a loss of a new high school. To me, the, the new high school was cool, but there were so many other things in the welcome center and the gifted center. The new early learning center, like those were, those in themselves were, it would have been a big win. So I think if we can salvage some of those positives, that would be really nice.
Well, we've really talked about a lot, we've had a lot of conversation in regards to Pickett being a building that we would like to utilize. We just need to figure out exactly what that looks like. So I would venture to say that Pickett's probably going to be something that we'll, we will use. We just don't know exactly how.
How many kids-ish, like an estimate, are at Webster?
Fifty-eight.
Okay. Okay, because in my brain, I'm thinking.
No, that's not including the whole wing that's special programs.
Right, that's kind of, and I don't expect you to just pop that number off the top of your head. But when I'm thinking about age of buildings and the age of Webster as opposed to the age of Pickett and the number of kids at Webster would leave in my mind still space to do a welcome center or something else. And maybe we don't utilize Webster anymore and that's purely a question and a thought.
When you say welcome center, are we talking newcomer center?
Yeah.
That's alright. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
And I, and I think that one thing that you have to look at too, and Karen could answer this specifically, but if you look at the numbers that are in Oak Grove, it's six thirteen and that's residential students only. And right now, I bet we don't have four hundred residential students, do we? So those programs are going to have to go someplace. You see what I'm saying? I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that are going to play into this decision. I, I'd venture to, how many, how many would you guess are residential now, Oak Grove residents?
Well, we've got thirteen classrooms that are special education and their kids bust in.
Yeah. So probably four hundred.
So then I have questions for you. So I know you said they did the walkthrough of the high school of Lafayette. Did they happen to answer, I know we're already overburdened on technology, like they're using extension cords. What is that going to do with all these extra kids coming in there? Do they?
What, what do you mean overburdened on technology?
Don't they have to use, like the electronics, they have to use a lot of extension cords and?
Electrical's all been upgraded and everything. I mean, with all the HVAC and everything that we've done, there shouldn't be electrical issues at, at those buildings.
Okay. And then the parking as well?
That's going to be an issue. That's something that, to be honest with you, I think DLR will speak specific, specifically to that.
Okay.
That's probably the biggest concern, right, Ashley?
I would say, yeah. They mentioned the cafeteria. I'm not as concerned about the cafeteria because I know they have three lunch shift.
Yeah, as long as we keep, yeah, as long as we keep the number at, at, at this, like we're talking about, cafeteria's not as big of a deal. And really eleven, if we're talking eleven hundred, parking becomes less of a deal too. It's still, still is a concern.
And you mentioned that you guys met this earlier this morning and that includes like old admin team and the new admin team and everybody's on board with this plan?
Everybody.
And was the transportation.
Not everybody's on board with the six, eight, and seven, eight, but everybody's on board with the two high school model.
What about transportation? Has Alabama geared up too?
I think transportation will take care of itself. I mean, it's not.
Routes will be drawn differently. I, that's, I hear, I hear that out there once in a while that kids are going to be on a bus for two hours. Kids are not, I mean, routes will be drawn differently. So routes lengths, number of minutes, they're going to be similar.
So, yeah, if somebody's looking at the routes that are out there advertised today, then sure, there, there's going to be issues, but that's the bus company's job is to draw the routes as we build the feeder patterns. So they're going to draw, redraw those routes and it will, nobody will be on a bus over and out.
Other school districts have buildings just as hardwired as we would have.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And they don't have kids on buses for two hours.
The only thing I'm just turning my head around, and maybe you guys can explain it to me, because I know a lot of people have the same question, is why we pick two, three miles apart?
Space.
Three, like Central and Lafayette, they're only, oh, for space, okay.
I, yeah, it's capacity.
Okay.
Benton didn't have near the capacity that Lafayette has. I mean, that, that really is what, that's what it's all about.
And we still have that, that one pager that we had with the, when we were going through the bond issue.
It was page twenty-eight.
For informational purposes only.
Of Option nineteen. And yes, we still have that, but it's, it's obviously going to look different now.
Well, but that was a nice document to show.
Actually, also, it was a document too as well and it had like a lot of information.
The one that you used whenever you did the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that was on there. And that was a nice one to show the capacities, like you just, you can't do any of the capacity.
For me to get a copy of that.
With the previous one?
Sure.
But you want to change to what this model's?
I'm, I don't need it changed. I mean, what I was saying more specifically is just that it, it shows you where, what our current enrollment is at those buildings versus the, the max capacity, which I know is not always, I get it. But I think that was helpful to see. You can't, you can only use the space that you have.
What's the current enrollment at Benton?
Um, six fifty.
So this will stay, it's a middle school, it'll stay, stay at six fifty?
It'll be very similar to the number of students that they have right now.
And those students are primarily coming from Spring Garden?
Right now?
Yeah.
Spring Garden, true.
All over.
See, we have open enrollment, so.
Yeah.
Some from Bodie.
They ended at six thirty-five.
But yes, to answer your question, Tom, the feeder middle school for Benton is Spring Garden.
And what's the, what's the capacity? What is the capacity of that?
Uh, was eight ninety, I believe, was, was the number.
That's nine ninety-nine.
Oh, nine ninety, I'm sorry, nine ninety.
When we say Plan A, is there a plan, are we discussing options with Plan B? Is there a Plan B?
We're working Plan B right now.
You said that, Plan nineteen, but.
Version nineteen?
Yeah.
I feel like that we, you know, we had a change in our primary direction and now we have the opportunity to reevaluate a little bit and make sure is that, is that still what the community's telling us in terms of, in terms of the right solution for our community? And, and it seems to me like that we, we need to be taking a look at an, an additional plan and see, and see, is this the only plan that would work? Or are there other plans that would, would work and what's going to be the best for our community?
Do they look at other options besides just what we have here? Do we have more than, or was this just it, what they looked at?
So I think that this goes back to the, the problem, and this is, this is the problem with annual elections is that we weren't all here through all parts of this, which is no one's fault except for Tony and Luca Myers. But we started with vision forward. We've built off vision forward and we went into the committees and we went through all of the data with the committees. And then we did the first version and got to whatever version we ended up with. So, you know, and we can start this process all over again, but it seems, but it seems like we keep going back and starting over expecting different results when the result stays the same. We don't have the staff to offer similar course offerings. We don't have this, you know, and that was before we had a nationwide and statewide teacher shortage. So I, I, I get your questions and I respect them very much. But we've, we've, it seems like we've already kind of settled this discussion about we have to go to a two-school model to be able to provide adequate educational instruction.
And I hear that. I, I'm, I guess I, and I, and I am late to the game, so I apologize for that. Nor am I trying to. What's that?
It's okay, look at you up at our meeting.
And I think it would be helpful if on the thirtieth, if we had some of the, like if we went back through and said, okay, here's what happened with vision forward. Here's, here's what happened, I know that you're familiar with that. Here's what happened with vision forward. From there, here's what happened at the board level with the administration. Here's everything that we went through. I think one of the things that Jake had put together at one point, and this was when we were still doing the committees, when you look at the saturation of the students, it's all, you know, we're all kind of in the middle to the west side of town, but then our buildings are all kind of like down the middle too. So then you have the Scaith-Pickett issue. So maybe if on the thirtieth, we could kind of start over from the beginning and do a recap, I mean,
it's a little bit of time in the afternoon, about like an hour or so that we can go over everything then.
And then Proposition Two, it doesn't look like it's on the, the website any longer.
I guess, I guess what my question is, and again, it's, it's a question and I'm, is, is, is we, we have to think that a new school is still on the table. And that it's, it's something that our district needs, our, our, our district wants and our community wants and needs.
Oh, totally, thank you.
Although somehow we didn't, you know, somehow, and I, I'm not putting any blame at all, somehow that's not what the result of the issue became. But, but should, are there other alternatives to consider in the two high school models? And I say this, and I'm a little hesitant to say anything, it almost sounds like brainstorming, but should we say the two high school models are Benton and Central and we built a new high school to, to the northeast?
The capacity's not there, Tom.
You can't fit, you can't fit those kids.
The capacity's not there to put students in Benton and Central. That's the only reason.
Well, I mean, we're, we're, we're then a hundred of what the capacity we're saying here, nine ninety to eleven hundred. A hundred and ten.
But then you, where do you put those other?
A hundred kids becomes a lot.
Yeah, I think we need, but I think we need that document back. So like I said, I'm on the community page right now where we have Prop S, Prop St. Joe School, Prop Reed, and for some reason Prop Two, the most recent one, is not up there any longer. But that had some really great documents on there that would explain how you don't really have any other options than, than Central and Lafayette. Or if you did Central and Benton, you'd have to be very creative.
They ever look at Benton and Hyde, since we're closing Hyde anyways?
You know, we originally had talked about a campus model there, just with the, there was a lunchroom issue, there was a gym issue. One thing that you would have to do, you would have to, you'd have to spend a lot of money, you know, to get to that point. So I'm not going to tell you there were never conversations because there were.
And, and all I'm saying is I think we need to also keep in mind we've got to leapfrog ahead and say, I, I'm not, I'm saying this like I'm more sure of it, I'm not, but, but, you know, how, how for our community and where are we going to put, are we going to put a new school as we modernize our facility? Where are we going to put that first new school? We do this with Lafayette and Central, then where do you put the new school?
No, I, I totally understand what you're saying and we talk about this all the time. This is not ideal, okay? I'm not telling you what the plan that we're putting together is an ideal situation. What I'm telling you is the plan that we're putting together has to be done from a staffing standpoint. And if it's not, you're going to be in trouble. We met at eleven thirty today, six of us. We have a staffing issue right now. But if we could have combined those high schools and utilized some of that staff to fill the issues or the voids that we have, we're going to be in a much better place.
Well, and the problem is, like, it's always a plan and we're almost there, almost going to implement it and then we stop and then we talk and we talk and we talk until the next election of new board members and then we go back. And then we talk and we talk and we never implement anything. And then in the end, it ends up even worse. And at the end of everything, the kids are going to suffer. And so we, it's at a, we're not able to keep on as we are. Like our luxury period is over with. And I do completely understand, like, like a new school is needed in the future, only I'm afraid of hesitating on a plan now until we are able, you know, to get there.
Well, and I think that that's one thing that the timeline will explain to you and DLR's watching this conversation right now to help them build that timeline.
They're watching this conversation.
But what, it's, you, you kind of, you kind of have to look at it as a phased approach. Administratively, we all agree that, you know, the new high school is where you want to go. And the fix with Lafayette and Central, that's not a permanent fix. I mean, that's not going to take you in, that's not going to take you into the future. But, so I really, it's, I really believe that the timing of everything, and once they put that timeline together, I think after the twenty-third, you'll kind of have a vision as to what that's showing you.
Well, and I think what she was getting to say that it is a permanent fix if it doesn't. Let's hope it does, but if it doesn't pass again, I mean, this is where we're going to be.
Yeah. And is it ideal? Are you going to change the education op, you know, the, is it moving everything into twenty-first century? No. But it, it is going to put us in a place to where from a staffing standpoint, we can be more comfortable to offer a better education to kids. Yeah.
I think, I, but again, I don't, and we, I, we talk, we, we keep talking about the high schools, but this is much more than just about the high schools. You know what I mean? Like, I think we get, we get caught up in the discussion about we need a new high school, we need, absolutely. But more so, we need staff. And we have staff, but we don't have, we don't have them set up in a way that's best for kids. We have four high, four middle schools, but they're not set up in a way that's best for kids. You cannot, you cannot argue that what we do at Carden Park and at other schools where we send, you know, you, we send cohorts to all four middle schools. That's not what's best for kids. So I, I just would caution everyone from getting to the conversation, going straight to the shiny new thing of the high school, a, a new high school, when there's so many other things that we can do to make things better. Pershing as an early learning center, a newcomer center, a gifted center, cleaning up some of these boundaries. I mean, all of those things, if we don't do something, those problems persist.
Well, and I agree with you and that's why I say I don't think you guys are stepping going back too far. I think you guys are heading in the right direction. The feeder patterns need to be fixed a long time ago. I just think, and of course, I know this is not the popular opinion, I just think two high schools three miles apart isn't ideal, but the rest of it, I think is great.
Two high schools a hundred years old is not ideal. I mean, not, and, and I think, I, to your point of we, we can't, whether it's six, seven, eights or seventh, eighth, I, I get it. There's a lot of argument either way. But we're not in a position. but we're not in a position that we can shoot for perfection and ignore progress. Like, we can't let perfection get in the way of, of progress.
I agree with that, by the way.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree with that, and I'm, and I'm, I know I'm throwing a wrench in there.
No, absolutely not, I mean, I, I don't.
By saying that, but my, my feeling is, and I, and not a but, and my feeling is, um, we just can't ignore the fact that we can't.
Yeah.
We can't be in this place five years from now, and we can't be looking at a one-year plan.
Well, I know.
Cause if we were, if we had passed the bond and had a thing, we'd have figured out how to do the staffing until we had that building built. Everybody realizes that, right? We'd have kept the same schools, and we'd figure out how to do staffing until it was built. And so, there's a building to make a plan.
That's right.
And we gotta be thinking about, what's, we gotta be thinking about, how do we get over the hump? Not just for, and I agree about making it better, I a hundred percent agree with that.
And I agree with the new high school.
But we gotta, we gotta make, we gotta look down and say, we can't do a thing for a year and honestly end up jerking people around, and I don't mean, I don't mean like a funny word with that, moving people all over the place and then saying, come back to the community, but now what we, what we wanna do is this. Um, it's, it, that, that's gonna send a big signal, and I realize there's already the chance to send a big signal by saying, if this doesn't pass, we're, we're gonna close Benton. But we, we've got, we, the, we, we have got to take a look as, as people on this board, and I'm newly on it, we gotta take a look at, how do we, how do we make a plan and present to our community a plan that says, this is what we're gonna look like in one-year, three-year, five-year plan?
Ten years, fifteen years.
Well, I think, but I think even, but again, we get caught up in that. The board, in three years, you have an entirely different board, and historically, you have an entirely different administration. So, I, I get what, I, I get what you're saying, I've argued to that point, and I, and we got here. I wouldn't have a problem if we put a new school on the bond issue every year. What, that's fine, but at, at the same time, to, we have to be going in parallel directions. We have to help the kids and the staff by going to all these new things, not just to high schools, fixing the middle school, uh, makeup or the composition, how we're doing middle schools, how we're doing another early learning center. If you wanna talk about kids being on a bus too long, that's a problem, and that's something that we can fix. But we can also be talking about, okay, we know that the plan is also to get a new high school.
Right.
But, but one we can control and one we cannot.
It's not either or.
One we can control and one we can't.
Good. Mike, you've been really quiet, what's up?
I have. Um, you know, I'd just add that I, I think, I think there's opportunity, you know, the, the, the board and administration gotta get on the same page. Because, um, you know, right now, I've been pretty satisfied to, 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 to have you guys come back as an administration and make a recommendation, you know, generally speaking, all these things we've continued to talk about, uh, staffing, two-high school model, uh, more equitable offerings, straighten out the feeder pattern, straighten out the middle school model, all that stuff, I think we're in agreement on. But we lose it when we start talking about execution, and I don't think that all board members are even on the same page as all, all administrators, and, um, we gotta, we gotta get there somehow. So, yeah, I've been pretty happy to hear you guys' recommendation, and it's good, but somehow we've gotta find a way, all of us together, to, to influence and say, wha- what is that plan? Uh, the other thing is, uh, a failure, I think, on all of our parts, administration and board, and that is, um, we, we've never really made that compelling, data-driven argument that we are in trouble financially if we continue to stay status quo. I mean, we've asked for it, we, we, you know, I believe in my heart, right? There's just a lot of things out there inefficiency-wise and maintenance-wise on these buildings that, that tells me that's right. But we've never really presented the public with that, that data and that projection that says, look, we stay what we're doing, here's what our budget looks like in two years or five years, and it's ugly.
I would, I mean, my response to that would be, at, at least when I went into this long-range plan and, and what we were doing, to me, finances was not a driving factor. I mean, I know that it's sustainability and how we're, we're trying to hire so many staff across so many buildings. I get that, but to me, it was less about the financial implications and more about test scores and staffing and recruitment. Um, and like I said, it, that one pager, I think, made a compelling argument for a lot of different problems. And, and that is, that is the problem that our district has, is we don't have one glaring problem. We have a bevy of them, and again, it's because we, we started on one plan and we did a couple things. We said, oh, let's do a six, six, seven, eight, well, let's do seven, eight. We didn't ever fix it, we never come back and like put it fully into implementation. So the, the financial part was never the, the glaring issue, it was that one pager, that was the glaring issue.
Do you think it's an issue, though? Maybe it's not.
That we don't have enough, oh, the financial part?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a state of public education in Missouri.
Well, Mike, I, I can tell you this, you can take a look at that last four or five years of budget.
Yeah.
And, and just look at salaries.
Right, that's where it's at. Right, seventy percent of our budget?
We haven't added staff. Think about that. You can see what's happened with salary and benefits over the last four or five years, and that's not because we've added staff. That trend's gonna continue unless you reduce some staff. And the only way you reduce staff, you, you can do it one of two ways. You can do it systemically like this, as we look to more efficiently staff buildings, because we're not efficiently staffed at our, for example, use the high school example, we're not efficiently staffed at three high schools, nor are we able to staff it in a way that we're providing an equitable education. I think we've been very clear about that. And I don't like to bring this one up, but you've got an operating levy in twenty-eight, twenty-nine that comes up on sunset.
I'm glad you said that, cause I was getting ready to, but I didn't know.
Because I, I will tell you that while it's my hope and my belief this community would continue to do that, and it's my hope and belief at some point, the noose that was put around the neck of this district by Dan Colgan, I'll say it, I'll say it, hell, wasn't he gonna fire me? I'm outta here tomorrow. I'll say it, by Dan Colgan, that was his last gift on the way out, putting an operating levy as a sunset, okay? Nobody else in the state has an operating levy as a sunset, okay? But if for whatever reason in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, you lose that sixty-one cents, you won't be cutting staff systemically, you'll be riffing, because you won't be able to afford to pay teachers. And I can tell you, if you have to riff, that is very different than.
Attrition.
Attrition and losing staff in a sense that, hey, as people are retiring and moving on, we don't fill a position because we've more efficiently staffed the buildings we have.
Yeah.
So that, so.
I agree with that.
That's the financial piece that I, if, if you need to hear that, I, I mean, I, I'll provide that.
I, I love hearing from you every time, but it, that, I agree with that, but our community did say yes to teachers getting the rates.
Absolutely, and, and, and I anticipate that they'll say yes to carrying on the sixty-one cents in twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
And that, you know, I think that's something that we, we can't be in fear of, I think we've gotta say, and certainly, I think a hundred percent of our folks say, our teachers are invaluable, and, and what we do, uh, to support them and continue to put them in a, in a ma- in a, in a good place has gotta be a key to our success, probably even relative to a new building. And I'm simple-minded enough that a hundred and fifty-seven million says, well, we want this, but, well, why don't you use it for this? Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm saying, I think that's the tension, is how do we, how do we go to the community and say, these are different things. Um, one is, how do we operate, and two is, we've gotta, we've gotta, I, I said this to Robert or somebody today, sometime you gotta buy a new car.
Not if you can't get approved for a loan and you don't have cash.
Well, and that, that, that's what we have got to though, we, we've gotta get to, we've gotta get together, and, um, and I wanna be a part of that. We've gotta get together and, and present a plan to our community, a plan for success for our district. And we got, we've gotta figure out, how do we do that, and how do we, how do we learn from what we just heard? I, I was, I, I helped with the bond issue that failed. Um, so, I'm not telling you I'm a magic bullet at all in this, but how do we, how do we learn from that? Um, how do we say, okay, what adjustment do we need to make, because, because they didn't accept this plan? And there's some that just didn't accept, I don't wanna pay any more property tax, but they, they didn't accept this plan. Well, then we gotta just say, well, then, what, we, we've gotta, we've gotta pause, not long, but we've gotta pause and say, we gotta reevaluate the plan.
Not redo it, just pivoting, we're just pivoting.
So, so that we, and so then when we come out of that, we say, this is our plan.
But what are, how many, I guess my question is, how many different ways can you pivot? When you only, when you have this many kids and you have this many buildings? There's not many options available to you. I mean, I will tell you, the second this email went out, I would say within five minutes, I had ten text messages asking questions, what about this, what about this? I was, I had not checked my email yet, I pulled up my email, I'm like, what did they put in this email? I was not shocked by anything you put in it, cause there's only so many ways that you can cut this pie. There's only so many buildings, we knew Hyde was never gonna be an option, we knew Pershing, we had already talked about it and repurposing it, um, we've already talked about, like, we've already talked about this, and we've, there's only so many ways you can pivot, you, you, there's no, there's not a lot of options.
And the thing about it is, a pause and do what? Nothing.
No, I'm not saying that.
Until next April, and then there's a new board election, and then there are new people, and their ideas are like, let's pause, but then we're just always pausing and we're never doing anything. I think that, I think that you had a good idea about catching everyone up on the thirtieth.
Yeah, there was, there were so many documents that we went through when we had the facilities committee.
Cause there's lots of information that's just not known.
Right, and we haven't revisi- we haven't revisited it.
And by not known, I.
For a year.
I just mean, you know, if you're newer.
Sure.
You don't know it, and so maybe, like, after the information, like, is out, it will give you a larger picture of why, like, as you're like, let's pause and let's have a pivot, and we're panicking, like, what do you mean? We, we're on fire right now, and so we can do like a pivot while we're burning, but then we burn.
They're just, they're, to me, we've, we've talked about all of the negative implications of not moving forward, so there has to be a sense of urgency, I, I think we agree on that. We have to go to two high schools, we only have certain capacities at those two high schools. I would, I would be, like I said, I would be totally fine if this Plan B is, here's what we're gonna do, um, and we're gonna run a new school bond issue every year, all right, get on it. Um, but, but we have to do what we can control.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna further the discussion just for my benefit, but I, I think, and I hate to, I use the word pause, I guess I think we are on an urgent timetable, and that's relative to next April. I mean, there's just a practical part of that that says, we've gotta, we've gotta figure out, get together, create a winning plan for our community for next April.
See, and I don't, I, I think, to, to me, people need to know what's go- our staff need to know what's going on in August. They need to have a general idea of what we're doing, where we're going, um, because they have to make decisions for their employment, and they have to make decisions for their families, just like everybody else. And again, the buildings and the student population is not gonna change. There's only so many things you can do based on the size and where everybody's located. There's, there's not gonna be this magical new information.
Any other comments, questions at this time? You said DLR will be here and they'll be able to answer questions, and.
They'll be here, and they will be presenting on the twenty-third. It'll be a timeline, as in, the new school will be part of that.
I'll send it, so I'll send an email, but can we get the documents?
Yeah.
From Prop Two, cause that, that one pager had, um, I think the ni- the best thing about it, it had current enrollment and capacities, and then that's when you can really see, you don't have a lot of options.
Okay.
It'll be posted on the bus then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Okay, moving on to policy. Are you guys looking at the policy reviewing? I know that there's been like a couple of emails about some questions and some comments, everything like that anymore, keep them coming. Um, are we doing good right now?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, most of mine revolve around, hey, I understand it, seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Are we, are we executing?
Yeah.
So that's, most of our minds come from.
Well, and then I thought it was kinda cool, you know, the two guys' lists were like almost alike in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
Every time.
I tried not to duplicate you, but, but I'm sure I did.
It's all right.
It just means, it just makes more sense, you know, I mean, it just means that we're kind of like aligned in the thinking about the policies, and so I thought that was a good thing.
And, well, Tonya, I'm, I'm starting to keep a list as we go through this, and I'm not ready to present it or anything, but that there are some, I kinda have two things that, you know, there are a number of committees that are required by policy that I'm not sure we're executing.
Right.
So that'll be on our to-do list, but maybe, and then also just, uh, relevant tasks that are required by policy, and, and I just wanna double-check we're doing them, and so I'm just gonna continue that list as we.
As we're moving on.
As we're moving through this process.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and so there you go, maybe you guys will see something different than I did, but I thought that might be a good takeaway.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Do you have a timeline on committees that you're thinking?
You say committees?
Timeline, cause one of the, the policies talked about an audit committee.
We're going to, it's actually on the list for the meeting on the thirtieth.
Perfect.
Yep, it's gonna be all in the discussion, it's gonna be an amazing afternoon, bring a pillow and a blanket, thanks. All right, anything else?
All right, next board meeting, June twenty-third, five-thirty, adjourned to executive session pursuant six-ten-zero-two-one, closed meeting, closed records for hiring, firing, discipline promoting particular employees and individually identifiable personnel records.
So moved.
One second. Miss Ashley.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, Miss Lanning. Mr. Richmond, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Kearns.
Yes.
I was busy taking notes, making sure I got first and second.
Yeah.
Oh. All right, this means adjourned.